We need to put Mr. Pat Luhon's Planning Commission nomination on for position number three on the agenda for nominations.
Second.
Okay.
Second.
All right, he's on. I'd also like to state that Mr. Ed Wells is here. He is number six on new business and I'd entertain a motion to bump him up somewhere so he doesn't have to sit here for this whole thing.
So moved to number two under Sherwood Court.
You're saying?
Second.
Under Sherwood Court or before?
Under.
He'll have a video presentation on his laptop, so it's gonna take a little bit.
Yes.
Are we doing bumping him up to unfinished business under Sherwood?
I'm sorry, yes, unfinished.
Yes, unfinished business, number two.
Um, I'd like to make a motion that we also move number four under new business up to number three under new.
Second.
Under unfinished?
Under, yeah, number four under new up to number three for unfinished. So all the people that are here can get done first.
Before town hall meeting?
Yes.
Is there a second on that?
Yeah, David did.
Any others? Mr. Rita.
Um, I'd move to strike item one under new business unless somebody's really wed to that idea.
I second that.
Item one under new business?
Yeah.
Well, it's already postponed.
Well, let's strike it.
I just don't strike it.
Just eliminate it.
Keep having to look at it.
Okay.
Okay.
Motion made and seconded. All right, cool. It is off. Any others? Okay, none others, motion to approve the amended agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Brings us to approval of the minutes for 4/22/13 and special meeting on 4/30/13.
Move to approve.
You're saying?
Second.
Any additions, deletions, corrections? Any of the above? Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Wait, does that include the, they also, the second?
We're doing the first one, the 22nd.
Okay, but that's not the April 30th one.
Yeah, this is for April the 22nd.
Okay.
Okay. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion to discuss the special, the minutes on special meeting April 30th, 2013.
So moved.
Second.
All right, changes, deletions, corrections? If none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any disagree, okay? None? All right, moves us on to Commission Committee Authority Reports Inspired Terms. Under Planning, Beverly's here and she will take the mic at this time.
I just want to let you know that the Planning Commission and the border zoning adjustment has been very busy. We have two public hearings tomorrow. One is for 37 Mountain Street. They're requesting setback variances. And one is 123 South Main and they're requesting rezoning from R1 to C1. You might have seen the sign at the top of Plainor Hill by the statue. We have that for tomorrow. We also have a revocation hearing of a CUP at 19 Judas Street. That's something different for me and that'll be tomorrow. Also, I send you some information. We would like, the Planning Commission is requesting that you add to your next agenda removal of front corner setbacks so that we can discuss it. And also, removal of 80 Mountain Street from R1 buildings used for religious purposes. They're not R1 and they're not buildings used for religious purposes. So if you could just put that on a future agenda, I'd appreciate it. Thanks.
Thank you. And as we discussed before, you should have an application for Pat Luhon for position number three on the Planning Committee.
Motion to approve, Mr. Luhon.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Mr. Luhon, you are in, sir. Welcome to the jungle. All right, that moves us to CUPC. Don't have any, anything on CUPC? Hospital, no report. Parks, no report. HTC, no report. Cemetery, no report. And before we get to public comments, I have a couple of proclamations I need to read just to get them out of the way. First is the National Historic Preservation Month 2013 proclamation. Whereas historic preservation is an effective tool for managing growth, revitalizing neighborhoods, fostering local pride and maintaining community character while enhancing livability. And whereas historic preservation is relevant for communities across the nation, both urban and rural, and for Americans of all ages, of all walks of life and all ethnic backgrounds. And whereas it is important to celebrate the role of history in our lives and the contributions made by dedicated individuals in helping to preserve the tangible aspects of the heritage that has shaped us as a people. And whereas see, save, and celebrate is the theme of the National Preservation Month 2013 and saving our heritage, Arkansas's historic structures is the theme of the Arkansas Heritage Month. Co-sponsored by the City Eureka Springs, the Arkansas Historic Preservation Program, the Department of Arkansas Heritage and National Trust for Historic Preservation. Now therefore, I'm Morse R. Pate, Mayor of Eureka Springs, do proclaim May of 2013 as National Preservation Month and call upon the people of Eureka Springs to join the fellow citizens across the United States in recognition and participation in this special observance. And also, I have a proclamation regarding Tree City USA. Whereas in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than 1 million trees in Nebraska. And whereas Arbor Day is now observed throughout the nation and the world. And whereas the trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce life-giving oxygen, and provide habitat for wildlife. And whereas trees are a renewable source of getting us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas trees in our city increase property values, enhance the economic vitality of business areas, and beautify our community. And whereas trees, wherever they are planted, are a source of joy and spiritual renewal. Okay? Now therefore, I'm Morse R. Pate, Mayor of the City Eureka Springs, Arkansas, do hereby proclaim Arkansas the 26th, 2013 as Arbor Day. In the City Eureka Springs, Arkansas, I urge all citizens to celebrate Arbor Day and to protect and support their efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. Further, I urge all citizens to plant trees to gladden the heart and promote the well-being of this in future generations. Thank you. Yay.
Gladden the heart.
Okay, that brings us to public comment. Somewhere there is a clipboard with stuff on it. To the microphone is Mr. Bob Dzinski.
Back again. Yeah, I'm here, I'd just like to make one comment about the conditional use appeal because this will tie in with the tourist lodging issue that comes up later. At the last council meeting on the previous CUP, I think there was some possible misunderstanding as to what the council can do tonight. They don't have to either deny or grant the permit because there is a problem in the code that I discovered in reviewing this. And the problem is that in order for a person to get a CUP on a residential unit that's being converted to a bed and breakfast, they must show that it has complied with all the plumbing and electrical requirements for a commercial building. And the code doesn't say when it has to be done. And possible, and Beverly, I think, is gonna speak on this, so I don't want to waste any more time on it. In other words, do they have proof that they complied with it? And that's really something in the code that should be clarified, and Beverly, I think, will address that. The other thing here, I'm here back to talk again about the tourist lodging issue here. And one of the things I find most disturbing is that nobody asks the question as to why isn't the law being enforced. And the people that are illegally, you know, engaged in tourist lodging, they never come down here and explain what their legal grounds for engaging in this weekly rental fiasco is. And they won't do it, and it's because I've emailed you, you know, some emails with attachments to them. One was a white paper prepared by a law firm which went through all the constitutional arguments because that was an issue that was brought up here. Could they file a, you know, lawsuit in federal court here, you know, in other words, a civil rights action? And they've never prevailed on this issue at all. And to show how scared they are, we are, they've actually now engaged, one of the illegal weekly renters has engaged in the practice of blackmail. And that is going to result in several lawsuits. And during, and since I have to sue one of them anyway, that's if I've given more time later, I think I'm just gonna bring this issue up in one of the, I have at least two or three causes of action against them for the blackmail. It's actually called, the proper name of the tourist intentional affliction of mental distress, also harassment, also filing a false police report. And in those three lawsuits, I think I'm gonna try and join the issue here because that was one of the issues. How can we get a court to come down with a decision on this as to what's legal or not? And we're gonna give the illegal tourist lodging couple an opportunity to come to court and show that what they're doing is legal.
15 seconds.
15 seconds. Thank you very much. And I hope I have more time later. I'll stick around if you'd like to ask me some questions.
More seconds, sound go.
She did?
Yeah.
Oh, there you are, okay.
Yeah.
Everybody use a different sheet of paper here?
Yeah.
Okay, Melissa. Melissa Green.
Okay. Hi, Melissa Green, 17 Bridge Street. As you know, I've been a commissioner for almost nine years and in that nine years, I've missed probably five meetings. Now, that's not why I'm here. Why I'm here is for this woman. Unfortunately, I wasn't here for her CUP hearing. And I'm not gonna say that things would have been different, but it was a hamstring commission with only four votes. And, you know, maybe if there were six, things would have been different. They were my neighbors for almost two years. We were not friends, we didn't socialize, but I never had such good of neighbors. And so that's why I'm here. I also, because I was gonna come and talk, I went over to the house that is in question. And what I found was an extremely well-kept, well-maintained house. Two very happy people that really want to do this on a house that's surrounded by C2 properties. Their closest house is 350 feet away. And by the way, that house is for sale with grass up to here. I mean, it's almost like it's out in the country. This should have passed. I mean, I don't want to put down my other commissioners because I'm sure they felt they had reason. And it doesn't mean I'm right because I'm standing here. I just would appreciate that you all would take this into account, that this is a couple that I think would do a good job. And a lot of people would say, Melissa, you're adding more lodging to what you already do. But I'm not afraid of the competition. I think they would be an asset to this community. They want to do it, so I'm hoping that you will look upon their application. Because when I went through the 20 things in our codes that they had to meet, they met all of them. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. That'll wrap up the public comments. Moves us into unfinished business. Number one is Sherwood Court sewage issue. Motion to discuss.
So moved. Second.
Uh, floor is open.
Um, I guess Dwayne Allen is, Dwayne here?
Uh, he called me and said he was gonna try to be here.
Okay. Is he not here?
Apparently, he's not made it yet. Hey, gang.
Howdy. Hostics are here.
Unless he's out in the hallway.
Dwayne, are you out in the hallway?
I haven't seen him or heard him.
You didn't? Okay. Well, I'll just leave it then. You all have this in front of you, which is a...
Okay, thank you.
Which is a opinion of probable cost. Basically, Dwayne took a spreadsheet here and got some unit costs for replacement of the, about 175 feet of, well, he broke this up into Glenn Street and then AVO Street. Glenn Street is the street on which Sherwood Court is on. And it's the, it was the problem area. AVO Street is, is the street that goes, is at a right angle and comes, has got an issue with the sewage coming in at that right angle and not really having a manhole to really accommodate it. So Dwayne was good enough to kind of put these numbers together here. As you can see, we replaced about 175 feet of sewer pipe between what is currently the point where AVO and Glenn connect and the hostics, four unit set of rental apartments or rental units deliver their sewage into it. And he's also put a four-foot diameter manhole in here, about anywhere from zero to six feet depth. The intention here is to fix the problem. And we all met, the hostics and Dwayne and I all met there on site, walked it, talked about it, looked at, you know, what could we do to prevent this from happening again? And the one thing we came up with was, well, we could put a manhole in here and that helps because we've got, got some problems with elevation differences. But a manhole allows at least access and it allows sewage taps come in and then freely flow down without, without bringing in a big sweep underneath the, underneath the street. So the bottom line is, it looks like we're at about $10,000, little, nearly $11,000 to fix that section of the street. Dwayne Allen has indicated that he, I asked him today, we met, I said, "Dwayne, can we, can you put this on your list? Do we have the money? Do you, does your department have the money to repair this? And would you put this as a higher priority to do that?" And he said he could. So I think we have, you know, we have a solution to that part of it. The second part of it here, and I'll try to speed up a little bit, guys. The second part of this is, is on AVO Street. And it's, it's, it costs about twice as much to do that. And I asked Dwayne again if we could use funds the next year to use this, put it on priority list. And he's already got a priority list, big, big issues. But one of the things I wanted to do was take these big issues and divide them up in smaller chunks that we could actually solve some problems with. So I think the first chunk that we could do, the first issue we can take care of is this, this strip right here between, on Glenn Street. And that would help prevent any more backups and almost, I'm not gonna say eliminate, but it'd help prevent any more backups there because we'll have new sewer pipe, we'll have a manhole, everything will be, you know, we'll have more of an opportunity to get a little more drop in that drain also. So I recommend that we, recommended to him that he pursue this, this section on Glenn Street for $10,785 is his estimate. So, and that we look at, we look at AVO Street as the next step in that. And then, and that might be a pathway for us to start addressing all of these issues throughout the city, just one small section at a time. Having said all this, I'm gonna diverge just a second and say that this Public Works Department operates on this, it's not a small budget, but on the slimmest margins of their budget. In other words, they budget, but they have very, very little room every year for anything that's going to happen. And something always happens. Stuff moves and breaks and deteriorates in this infrastructure we have. So one of the things, we're gonna have two things. We're gonna have tap fees, I think Lonnie is talking about and can talk to us about that later on. But I think we're gonna have to look at wastewater, our wastewater fee increase. I think that's gonna have to be increased because there's no other way to pay for it unless we all pay for it and we all use it. So to wrap this up, though, I think, Brian, I need to see if, if you guys, you and Lil would be okay with the city repairing this. Would that, would that satisfy you on the issues that you brought forward to the council? Lil?
That's a start, but, you know, seeing's believing. I want to see that it's fixed. I mean, you could say this tonight and then we go home and say, "Okay, great, they're gonna fix the sewer line." And then it doesn't get fixed and then we're still out the money and we still have a broken sewer line. So...
Well, if we decide to fix it, I mean, if we direct the city department, actually, I don't think, does Dwayne need direction? I think he can do it on his own, can't he?
If he's got the mind to do it, I'm sure he could.
Yeah, yeah, he can do it on his own, so it's a matter of...
If he's got the money to do it. But if he doesn't have the money...
There is, there is some available to do it. And like I said, a small amount. So that's what we're, that's what we're trying to do is address these issues one at a time and the smaller issues, so...
Well, when he was out there the other night, the other day when you were there, I thought he said he didn't have the money to fix it, that he was gonna put some numbers together, but he had zero dollars.
The, the public works and a lot of the city departments depend upon revenue stream on a monthly basis coming in. So that's, that's part of what he was saying, you know, at that point in time. Am I correct, Mayor? Isn't that right? I mean, they have to wait on payment of water bills before they have revenue in. And so their budget is based on, you know, previous year's revenue. So he's indicated to me that he has it, Lil, and we'll, you know, and I'll, I'll push and make sure it gets done.
And so, and if it doesn't?
I'll push to make sure it gets done. If there's some reason, I mean, if there's, you know, some huge issue that the city has to put a lot of money out for, for instance, Grand Avenue slide repair, the Spring Street slide repair, completely unforeseen, then things might have to be diverted, you know. But, but typically, I mean, he said he's got it and, I mean, it's kind of putting my feet to the fire then.
Well, what I hear, what I hear her saying is that she'd kind of like a date where if it isn't going by then, call me or something. I mean, she wants something a little more solid than, you're ever gonna fix it, but let's give her a timeframe so she knows that we're paying attention. That, I think, would that make you feel better?
That would make me feel better. Plus, I mean, another thing that Brian and I discussed is you pay us for our damages and hole. You fix it and we'll give you half back. You know, I mean, that would hold everybody's feet to the fire to get it done.
I do know that Public Works can fix this, this part. And I can't answer on the legal aspect of reimbursing. And that's, I think that's been brought up before. It's a city's tort reform, correct?
Tort immunity.
Tort community.
Your heart's in the right place.
Yeah. So I think the city, but this is what the city can do. This is what they can offer you guys. And I can't speak for Dwayne. Hope that he would have been here tonight, but what I can do is get him to see what, if we can get a work order or a date or plan, you know, where they can get out there and start working and send you that notification.
I don't have, well, let me rephrase that. I have very little confidence in the Director of Public Works at this point.
Well...
Just, so, I mean, that, but it's up to you. You guys are gonna do what you want to do.
Mr. McClung. Um, based on this information that we have here, I'd like to make a motion that the City Council direct, the Director of Public Works to facilitate this repair to Glenn Street as he has proposed it here. The work to start just immediately and as soon as possible.
With, with the assurance the money is there?
Well, yeah, I mean, that, they'll find it.
I'd like to second that.
Ms. Snyder.
I'd just like to say, and I don't know a timeframe either, but if it's not done in three to six months, you come back and you rip our heads off. I mean, you know, it's that simple. And you let us know so we can have him here.
Okay. Any further discussion on the motion? Mr. McClung.
Yeah, now, um, will this, will this take some of the pressure off of AVO Street too or does it affect it at all?
It, it takes some of the pressure off. It will, AVO Street needs to have its line replaced as well. But it, the tap will go into that manhole. Both AVO Street will go into there and so will Sherwood Court. And then it goes down in an eight-inch main from there.
Okay, so it's, it's actually...
That new line should do a lot, too.
Yeah, it, it should do a whole lot.
Okay. The court, please repeat the motion so everybody can understand it.
Mr. McClung made a motion to direct the Director of Public Works to begin work as soon as possible, although there was a little segment in the middle. But that was the gist of it. And Mr. Perkey pile seconded.
Yeah, just to base, based on this sheet that he gave us.
Okay.
Yeah, based on his projection there to go ahead and facilitate that repair.
Specific to Glenn Street, not the other?
Yes, just, just the Glenn Street one.
Just the Glenn Street at this point.
Like, I like the way he said, you know, may put the other...
Any further discussion on this? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Anything else for these folks?
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Thank you for all your consideration.
Thank you, Brian, Lil. Appreciate it.
Okay, that moves us up to Mr. Ed Wells. Ed, you have the, you have the fourth.
First of all, I'd like to...
This is a little bit, I'll show it later.
Thank you to the mayor for allowing me to work on the new website. I don't know how many have actually been able to visit it and notice the differences and the changes in the ease of access now that we have to being able to look at ordinances, city council minutes, videos. But one of the other things in my proposal that came up during this was the fact that a lot of the city records are still sitting in paper form in case of fire, event, flood, any of these kind of natural disasters. These records wouldn't be entirely lost. Apparently, this has happened already once to the city in prior years. My proposal is to actually go in and take these records and make them into digital form, place them into a data archive that would be accessible by anybody that is associated with the city. They'd be able to bring it up on their computer, be able to print it off if it happens to be something for an FIO request. They'd be able to print it off and hand it to the person when they request it versus spending three days hunting and pecking through different files and folders and, and things that may be even missing. I know it would cut down on a lot of the headache that they have in searching for files. I know that the public would probably see it as a, as a plus, the fact that now with everything being digitized, they would not have to worry about the fact that if something was to happen, those files are gonna be kept safe. The proposal shows two, one terabyte external hard drives that will hold all of the current files. Those are to be backed up in ordnance of every three to six months. That would be something that we'd have to either find someone here at the city or you can ask me to do it. That's no problem. Being able to scan the documents as they come in is not that big of a deal. They're scanned into PDF format. Matter of fact, Diane does that now on some of her stuff. She brings it in, puts it on scanner, brings it in as a PDF format and then saves it on her hard drive. This proposal actually puts everything... This proposal actually puts everything on a server that is not located in this building, but is under a secure lock and key with a company called Arvexi, which is probably one of the best server companies in the world. They do all of the actual server maintenance, so there's no further cost to the city for repair, or if something happened to the server, it's not going to be a city responsibility to pay for the repairs. The website, domain, and so on and so forth have already taken care of by working with the mayor to get the new website up and running. So there's no more costs there. The servers are being paid for, the domain is already purchased. What this entails, from everything that I've been able to come up with, I don't know if y'all received a copy of it, but I found a small city, much like Eureka Springs, that had, went through and did digitizing of all their documents. In this, it notes that they spent something like $40,000 for one year's worth of work, and when I checked further into it, it actually wound up costing more because they couldn't get it all done in a year. There was damage to the books, bindings, different things of this nature that hampered, you know, and being able to handle those without tearing them up or damaging the books any further than what they are. So what I did was I put together for the mayor a two-year contract that would allow me to come in, digitize all of these documents, get them into Safe Haven, literally, and do this, I do believe on the proposal it says it was for thirty... Any other day, I'd find this right off the bat. Yeah, it was $39,520. What that basically equivalutes to is 9.50 an hour for me to scan all the documents, preserve all the documents, and get them onto a website, create a database program that would be accessible by city employees to be able to have access to any of those records and be able to print them out from a secured location. Of course, I mean, your current paper files can remain where they are, or, you know, y'all can do something different with those as well to help preserve them, but this would take all of that paper, condense it down, and make it a lot easier for everybody to find and utilize. But this comes out to, basically, it's 52 weeks for a year, $19,760. That's just a normal work week for an average employee. Everything that I've been able to find is running this kind of a service, not including developing the program to be able to serve it to the city building on a server, but just being able to document, bring down, digitize everything, and put it into a safe place is running anywhere from $60,000 to $70,000, and that's given in a year's time. The reason why I can do it is I already have a lot of the equipment, hard drive prices have come down, and I'm not a big massive company that's asking you to pack up all your stuff and mail it to me so that I can sit there and have 40 people run through it and digitize it. So that's the reason why I can keep the cost down and do a service for the city, and I'm sure that I can get it done in two years. If it's done before then, which is something I was working out with the mayor, if we get through with the project and everything is done prior to the two-year contract, then it stops right then. There is no further, you don't owe me anymore.
Sir, would you open that door, please? It's getting a little warm in here. Otherwise, we have to turn the air conditioner on. Thank you.
The project would come to an end right then. There wouldn't be no continuation, and this is something that would work out with the attorney when we fill out the contract, is that once the work is completed, there's no reason for me to still remain here for the rest of whatever period of time. Once the work's done, it's done. So if I can get it done under budget, that's exactly what I'm going to do. But I don't know, considering condition of records and so on and so forth, this was just a very basic estimate to give an idea of what it would take to get these city documents digitized, get them into a form, get them onto a safe server, and prevent anything from happening to them in the future. The other thing that was asked of me by Diane was that the city council itself had asked for a proposal on being able to put like a town hall meeting section into the new website. I did a lot of the base coding already, so that way I would know what the hours would be involved in it. I still have a couple of database things that I still need to do to it. I just wanted to get the basics of it up. I was going to show you all tonight. Unfortunately, I can't get on the internet. I've tried using my phone, and we've tried every way in the world to get the password for the wifi here in the building, and I, and nothing has worked. What this would allow you to do is to post a comment, question, anything that the city was wanting, and then it puts down at the bottom where anybody going to the actual site would be able to post a comment related to that particular subject, which I think is exactly what y'all were asking about. All of these can be either hidden or taken off in case it gets to be a heated discussion or things are said that aren't supposed to be. They can be removed, those comments can be removed. If the whole thing is a closed matter, then it can be hidden from the public as a closed matter. It'll still remain on the server. You can go back, and the administrator of the site can be able to go back and look at it at any time. But as far as the public's view, once the item is closed, once y'all are done accepting comments on it, then you can hide it, and the public will never see it again, or you can delete it, whichever way the case may be. With time and everything involved in that, I was figuring it'd probably take about $180 to get finished up with it, including all of my time that I've already got involved in setting it up, just to make sure that it would be done. And once that's done, then I can have it up in probably a day, day and a half. Because all I like is just hooking it into the database so that it actually retain what people are typing and the information that y'all are trying to put into it. And other than that, I guess that's pretty much about it. Any questions, or?
Ms. Snyder, go ahead.
I'm from the old ways. When you digitalize stuff, you're not going to like toss our records, right?
No, that's the reason why I was saying, all your current paper records would remain here, or if there is an off-site facility that y'all use to store records...
So we will still have our original paperwork if and when we want, okay.
Yes.
Just wanted to make sure.
All the digitizing does is take a form like this, that's on a piece of paper, copies it, put it on a scanner, it brings it into PDF format, which is actually an encrypted format so that nobody can change what is on the paper. It encrypts it so that it can't be changed, but it can be downloaded and it can be printed off. This can also be extended to FIO requests that could be actually purchased online. Many cities are doing that now. Several cities, actually, I've found, are going to the point of, instead of having someone fill out an FIO request, send it in, wait three days, then coming down here, picking it up, they search the document that they're looking for. If it's what they look for, they pay for it right there on the site. They download it, they've got it. No, nothing for the city to have to do, other than, you know, just make sure that they stay up on, you know, make the site is updated.
Ms. Yell, go ahead.
What you're talking about, then, is scanning all of ordinance, resolutions, city council meetings, and city business things, and business of the city council, in effect, building a database of it and putting it on a server. Then is there a weekly or an annual hosting fee for this? Is this a recurring expense, or is this a one-time thing that you have here? This, I don't understand, the 52 weeks monthly payments and the two-year total estimate, is that a one-time charge, or is there an annual service charge for doing this?
Now, after the contract is over, then I have the information listed in there, what it would be if something happens and you need me to come back in and be able to deal with it. I had that outlined in the proposal where service calls...
Okay, but there are no server hosting fees in addition to what we're paying now for the website?
No, the server hosting fees are being handled already by the city website.
Yeah, okay.
So there's no sense in getting a whole nother server and costing the city even more money when the server that they have, that I have them set up with right now with Arvex, will handle holding your records and be able to host the website and be able to host the user end of it here at City Hall. And if you decide that you want to use the version of it where they can pay for it online and download it, it will do every bit of that.
Okay, and then the second question I had was this kind of continuing public comment, public meeting kind of thing, sounds really similar to what we already have called the Geek Fest Discussion Board. So this would almost be a duplicate of that, or is there somehow different from that? It sounds like it's...
Geek Fest is not ours, yes. The Geek Fest is not ours.
It would be run like that, it would be threads that you...
Well, yeah, we would own it, and it sounds like it would be a little bit more restricted, but, because it would be governed by the government instead of somebody else, but it sounds... Okay, now, this, again, to get this set up, this discussion board thing, town meeting thing, set up, $180, then is there a continuing charge to host this, because it has to be monitored?
No, it's on the site. It's built into the, it's going to be coded into the website.
Okay, but somebody has to read it and monitor it and see what's going on and govern it. I mean, I've been in this too. I started one of these before we had Geek Fest, and it requires continual attention because it gets out of hand real quick. The comments get out of hand real quick. I mean, we're, well, you'd have to be on Geek Fest to know how this goes, but anyhow...
I understand what you're saying, and I figured that, you know, somebody would, here at the city, would be...
Well, it's no simple matter. If the entire city has access to this town meeting and can post any comment they want, this is almost a full-time job, reading this stuff and monitoring it. I mean, I just, this is just for discussion because we're obviously not going to vote on this tonight, I don't think.
Mr. Mitchell was next.
My intention was to have, you know, kind of a place where somebody could, we'd have a topic. First one would be town hall meeting. You know, what would you like to see the city do? What are the priorities in the city? What are the big issues in the city? It wasn't so much having a bulletin board where we have conversations going back and forth.
No, this isn't a conversational thing.
This is just something that would be, okay, I think we need to, you know, fix a pothole on certain street.
Okay, okay, I see.
Yeah, it's not a back and forth. This is strictly that the city puts out a question, and then the responses to that question are listed underneath it in a comment.
Okay, that clarifies it a bit.
And so it would have a finite period of time for comments. And then, as he indicated, we could close it, we could take that, digest it, you know. Now that, but you're right, Joyce, that takes somebody to actually pull that off, print it off, pass it around to whoever we, you know, if the council wants to look at it, or just administration, you know, whoever wants to look at it. It's a new babe. I mean, we're trying to grow it, so...
Yeah, sure, okay.
Any further comments? Any further questions? Mr. McClung?
So, $39,520 or monthly, 16, 46, 67. So that's for 160 hours of work.
Well, it's based over 52 hours, 52 weeks.
Right.
If you take, and you take, okay, if you take $9.50 an hour, 40 hours a week...
Okay, okay, every four weeks, yeah, that's, okay, $400 a week, basically. And this is for you personally, is that correct?
Yeah, that's just for me to come in every day and scan documents and get them uploaded to the server and be able to get these things actually tagged into the website, because they have to be coded in.
Well, I'm, you know, I don't know really personally anything about this kind of thing. I'm pretty ignorant. Computers and digitalizing and things of that nature, I understand how it can be effective and it can be important to do, but I can't do anything for $10 an hour. That's what I'm saying, is, you know, I don't, I don't, I mean, you have a home, a family, you know...
Oh, I have a website business that I run.
Yeah, I understand.
I'm doing this strictly for the city. I mean, I have Boone County Adult Daycare Center that's out in Harrison, that I manage their website. Matter of fact, I'm fixing to probably pick up the actual city services website for all of the transit and everything over there, so...
What I'm saying, this is a full-time, you know, basically a full-time job.
Yeah, that's all stuff, the stuff, the side stuff that I do, as far as my business... Pays, it makes up the difference.
I was just going to clarify it. It sounds to me like he just spread that cost out on an hourly basis, a full-time basis for two years. But it sounds to me like you've got other business ventures going on that you do, correct?
Yes, I have other stuff that I work on in the evening.
The real actual hourly rate is probably more like $20 an hour or something like that. You know, the number...
You mean he's not working?
He just spread that, he spread that out, that cost out over 2,080 hours a year, you know. That's about a full-time job. So he spread that out over a year.
Well, while I'm doing the actual digitizing here, I'll be set up downstairs from whatever time I can get in the building till the time that y'all close.
Well, I guess that's what I'm not understanding, then, is that your two hours, or the two years of time, 40 hours a week, that's not really what's going to be happening, or that's what you'll actually be doing, 40 hours a week?
That's what I'll actually be doing. The websites that I'm doing...
For two years, or, I mean, if you get it all done in the last time...
Then the contract will end, yes.
Took the exclusion of everything else? It's a job, and he'll be doing a job just like one of us for it.
It's a contract job, it's a full-time contract job, for me to come in and take care of what needs to be done here for the city. Now, as far as the website...
We're not withholding taxes?
No. I take care of all my own taxes.
Mr. Mitchell?
I think that is, I understand where Mr. Alderman McClung is coming from, and I'm not as concerned about when the gentleman does it, or how he does it, or what hours he puts in, per se. I'm more interested in the outcome of his work, which would be the digitalization of all of the records for the city. And that concept in the 21st century is pretty vital to set the city up for now and for future council members and future mayors and for the future of this city. So the concept of digitalizing the records now and then having a system where they are ongoingly maintained after he brings this up to parity at where we're at now, I think is a very important one. So the concept is, does people think that $39,000 is a fair price to take all of the records of the city and bring them up currently digitalized, which personally, having worked, again, in the medical area with computers, which was obviously a lot more expensive, this is miniscule price for a project like that, miniscule. And so you have to kind of come up with, do you think the concept of what he's doing is worth the money? And I personally have to tell you, I think it is worth the money. And the next question would be, is it in the budget for this year to do it? And that's a question we have to go to the finance director.
Mr. Vida?
Well, I understand, too, that we're just talking about seven months this year. We're not talking about a full year at $19,000, so it's seven, it's almost half of that $19,000, so it's a little over $10,000 for this year.
Ms. Yell?
I don't remember any money being in the administrative budget for this. Whose budget does this come out of?
Right, and that's coming out of my professional services.
Okay.
But this will have to be something different. The proposal will have to be something different.
This has to come up from somewhere extra because there isn't that much leeway in what, we've budgeted down to the penny this year, so we don't have an extra $10,000 anywhere. It's got to come out of somewhere else, and I'm just wondering where this would come out of, and do we really want to take money out of that place for this? We need to talk about this a little bit.
This is, go ahead, David.
I just think we should...
I, I just think we should ask Lonnie to research it and bring us the information back at next meeting.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, the second part, just having the, setting up the, the comment button-
Yes, sir.
-of the town hall comment button, your department can authorize that on its own, for the website. Just, just, I mean, it's a hundred and eighty bucks, right?
Yes, sir.
Is that what you said? I mean, I think we ought to go ahead and do that.
That can handle that.
You know, uh, but we need some discussion here about the town hall meeting update, which is our next topic, so. Maybe we ought to-
This is all inclusive, so we're just bringing it to you to show you what we can be doing. For those that haven't looked at the website, it's, it's one hundred and eighty degrees from what it was.
Yes, sir.
We have, we have no problems getting ahold of Mr. Wells. Uh, if, if we need something, he's Johnny on the spot, whereas the last time, we went for two or three months without any contact with the website.
Do we have the real councilman on there?
Yes, everything, everything has been updated.
Yes, yes.
That was so frustrating.
The other thing is, is I have a personal website that has a ticket, uh, forwarding system on it. So, at any time, even if, even if they can't get ahold of me right then, uh, they can go to my website, and there is a support button there on the side of my website. All they have to do is click it and, uh, submit a ticket. Uh, and it comes directly to my phone, actually. So, no matter where I'm at, what I'm doing, uh, all of my customers, I monitor that way.
Now, do you live in this area, or do you have to relocate?
Yes, I do.
Okay.
I live right out one forty-three.
Okay.
Just on the other side of the Kings River.
Mr. Nubina.
Well, I think it's definitely worth looking at. I'd, I'd hesitate to, to go right with the town hall thing right away, and, uh, but I think we need to have Lonnie look for the ten thousand dollars. But it's an opportunity that doesn't come by very often, and, uh, I think we definitely need to consider it.
Put that in a motion?
Uh, I'll, I'll move to, uh, ask the finance director to see if there's ten thousand dollars available for this year's, uh, digitizing of, uh, city records.
Do you have a second?
Second.
May I say, any further discussion on it? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Thank you.
Thanks. Thank you very much.
You bet.
Uh, you want to get with me about what he was talking about with the town, with the, the comment?
Yeah, he said that the, now, my understanding on the town hall is either, I think you said hold off, I think you said go ahead.
That's supposed to already be-
Did you want to go ahead and, and-
Well, we, we need to have something there and con-
We already approved that, I thought.
But we need to have the, the question there. You know, we need to have the information there.
Okay, so I need to know whether to go ahead with it or not, so.
Can we see a, a format or a template of it at some point that would help us?
That's what I was going to do tonight. That's the whole reason why I brought my laptop. I was trying to get on the internet, but I cannot.
I think that would help us.
It's built into the website, and you're able to post a question, and then they can comment on that particular question, but they can't start a new post.
So, my understanding is-
It's not a forum.
Next meeting?
I thought we already approved it.
Okay, my understanding is that as of right now, we're holding off on the town hall meeting issue until the next meeting, until we find out-
For the website.
For the website, yes.
Yes, that's all.
Yes.
Yeah, could you make a presentation at our next meeting?
Uh, I was hoping to be able to. I, I don't know what the password is for the wifi. Apparently, we had issues trying to get that, so.
We'll get you hooked up. We'll work all the details out.
I wonder when the next meeting is. It's a twenty-ninth?
The next meeting is, uh, what is it, the-
Twenty-fifth.
It's on a Wednesday.
Twenty-ninth.
Twenty-ninth.
I see the twenty-ninth, yes.
Wednesday, the twenty-ninth.
Okay, any further on this? All right, thank you, Ed. Appreciate it. Okay, this brings this up to number, the next one in line, which was changing the agenda, which was-
Appeal for the-
Yes, the M. Singer, En, did I say that?
M. Singer.
Okay, close, okay, close enough. Time y'all come on up. Motion to discuss?
Some move.
Second.
Okay, floor is open. Let's go ahead and state your name.
Hi, my name is Pam Ensminger. I live at eight Drennan Drive, and I am here today to ask you, to request of you, a conditional use permit. Um, you have my file in front of you, and for the reasons that, uh, I have stated there in my file, um, that is why I'm here and taking up your time. But, um, first is, first thing is that the, um, the first part of that file, which I don't have in front of me, actually, but, um, the-
Put there on the same.
Sorry. Getting a little nervous already.
Take your time. We'll, we'll be here.
Okay, so, the, um, the commissioners that were here at the, the, uh, planning meeting, there were only four of them. And as you know, I needed all four votes, or I'd lose. One way, either win or lose, and there was no other option there. And so, I didn't get all four votes, so I lost. Um, the second reason is that I had, um, that they took in consideration was the fact that there were neighbors who came to the meeting, one, one set of neighbors, who have a vacant lot within two hundred feet of me. They also have a home that's beyond two hundred feet of me, but that home has been up for sale for at least the whole year that I've been there, and they've been to that property maybe a month out of a year. Currently, they're not there. Their grass is high, they're, you know, they're trying to sell their property. And I ask you, would they care about that neighborhood if they sell their property? So, that's up to you. Um, but that also represented twenty percent or less of my neighbors. The other thing was that I was under the impression that I did not have to be ready for this, uh, this, uh, conditional use permit completely when I got here. We had just gotten into spring, that was two months ago, so we were just getting the warm weather, and I was finally being, being able to get outside and get things done outside. Now, as you see from the pictures, I think, that, um, you have, um, that we are about ninety percent there. Um, we've busted it in the last two months, and I would invite any one of you to come to my property. I'd be very proud to have you there. Um, I'm very proud of the property. I love the property. It's a unique area. It's a forest. I want to preserve it as much as I can, and I want to share it with other people. I have, um, had the, um, opportunity to manage a resort in Mexico for three years, so I understand the obligation and responsibilities to the customer as well as to the city. And, um, and so in that, you know, I'll, I'll, I'll let that go. But, um, I have, um, Melissa was here. She spoke to you. I've known Melissa. Um, I lived by her, um, knew her for a year, um, and Joe. And, um, I have three other references that I would like to offer. Um, they're short. I'm going to read them if you don't mind. Is that okay?
Yes, go ahead.
Thank you, sir. This one is, um, from Nancy Wines. Um, you probably, most of you probably know her. She owns The Jewel Box. And, um, it says, "To City Council, I am writing in regards to an application for a cup for Pam Ensminger, which is coming before you for review. I have known Pam for a number of years since she has been in Eureka Springs, and before, actually. At one time, she rented my home before purchasing her home at eight Drennan Drive. As a renter, she took good care of my property as if it were her own, and was always timely with her rent. I am, that was the first year I moved here. I understand that she is applying for a cup on R. Two Street for a single unit B and B within the existing structure. Her location seems to meet the requirements for this zoning, including good parking. I am sure her accommodations will be tasteful and that she will be a great hostess to her guests. Sincerely, Nancy Wines." I have another one for you. Um, this one is from, um, Wayne Schmidt. I've known Johnny and Pam, my partner Johnny, Kim, and I have known Johnny and Pam for several years and have broken bread with them on several occasions. Some of the best food in the world. Positive experiences in the bed and breakfast world is what brings the perfect people to Eureka Springs. For the food alone could bring repeat tourists here year after year. Plus, they're friendly people. I know they brought their property with a bed and breakfast in mind and feel like they would be good promoters of the town. Longtime resident, Wayne Schmidt." And the third one I have here, and the last one, um, "To whom it may concern. As owner of number fourteen Drennan Drive and immediate neighbor of Pam Ensminger, at eight Drennan Drive, I am aware of their plans for bed and breakfast and have toured their fine property. I believe that approving this application would allow Pam to offer a unique and lovely experience for the guests of our tourism town. I have been a homeowner in the historic district since nineteen ninety-five, and I would like all my neighbors-